Here in Hamilton County, we continue to have about three thousand two hundred active cases of COVID nineteen. When I look across the county, there tends to be in the subdivisions that I serve, there tends to be fairly even distribution of those cases, meaning there's no one particular area that I serve that is getting more hard hit from COVID cases. So I think we'll continue to watch that, but really having no surprises there is a positive trend. In addition, over the last month and a half, we continue to see about a hundred cases per day in Hamilton County. Um, no great shift in in that as well. Uh, there are some new variants here in Hamilton County. We're up to about thirty-three variants of COVID uh varieties here within the jurisdiction that I serve. I believe there are additional cases within the city of Cincinnati as well. Once again, the vaccines are effective against the variants as well as we know that masking and social distancing for those that aren't vaccinated are also effective tools at combating these variants. Percent positivity remains around three point eight percent for Hamilton County. This uh is slightly higher in the suburbs, slightly lower in the city of Cincinnati proper. And that trend has kind of continued throughout the pandemic as well. The reproductive number matching our case numbers have continued for the last couple of months to hover right around one. Today we're at one point zero one. Uh, the fourteen county region is at zero point nine five this morning. Hospitalizations, really no change here as well. Since the beginning of March, we've had around a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy individuals within our fourteen county regions hospitals. Today we're at a hundred and sixty. In addition, today we're a little bit low on the number of individuals within our intensive care units. We're at thirty-six, of which twenty-nine individuals are on ventilators. When you look at the Ohio Alert System this past week, um, it was announced that we had five metrics currently flagged within Hamilton County. That was a bit of a negative shift for us. We've had only two metrics now for the better part of a month and a half. Um, we did gain metric four, five and six because for a five-day period, uh, we did see slight increases in emergency department visits, hospital admissions and outpatient visits. I don't see any trend continuing, and so I'm pretty hopeful that these three metrics will fall back. We will continue to remain a county with high incidence as long as indicator one stays above a hundred. We'll be stuck at red and have high incidence of COVID, so we'll watch that metric as well closely over the coming weeks. Just before I hopped onto this call, the Centers for Disease Control actually issued some new mask guidance. I haven't had a chance to dig into it too deeply and read the actual guidance document, but at a high level, it looks like they are saying at small outdoor events, it's okay to do so without a mask safely for vaccinated individuals. In addition, we know that outdoor dining is safe as well for outdoor or for individuals that are vaccinated. And they are still recommending when you're in large crowds, particularly particularly outside, that masks would still be worn as a safeguard. I should have uh more information as my team has a chance to look at those documents that they uh put out shortly ago. But I'd say that this is great news. You know, the science has really been driving the decisions that are being made throughout this pandemic. And what the science is telling us is that vaccine is working and it's it's helping us get things back to a more normal uh life that we're all excited to have. So speaking of vaccine, how are we doing? Uh, here in Hamilton County, we continue to trend ahead of the state of Ohio. Ohio is at thirty-nine percent of the total population being vaccinated. Here in Hamilton County, we are at forty point five percent of the total population having received their first dose of vaccine. I was on a call earlier today and I was asked the question, does this percentage include everyone? And it's important to note that these are Ohio citizens vaccinated in Ohio that we are able to capture data for. So if somebody traveled to Florida and received their vaccine, or if somebody received their vaccine across the river in Kentucky, they would not be included in this number. In addition, individuals that are vaccinated at a veterans hospital would not be included in this number. I think that would have a positive impact. Clearly, the percent population vaccinated would go up some, but I don't think it's a drastic increase. I think it's um a modest increase at best. Every person vaccinated though is a success and I'm I'm happy to report that right now we're at forty point five percent. Um, also, we continue to make progress with uh vaccinating our minority populations. Uh, week after week, we're seeing a greater percentage of the total population get vaccinated. There are many uh efforts to bring vaccine directly into communities that don't have a great access to vaccine, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Um, the one item I did also want to share, um, often I'm seeing a slight discrepancy when you look at the metric used by the Get Out the Vax Campaign, which is the regional goal to get vaccine to eighty percent of our residents in Hamilton County and quite frankly, the region versus the number that I just reported, which was forty point five percent. The difference in these two numbers is that the Get Out the Vax Campaign omits individuals that are between zero and fifteen because they are ineligible to receive any vaccine. So they're only looking at the eligible uh population to get vaccinated, which is why this percentage is higher. The data though is coming from the same source, and so those two numbers are essentially equal, just looking at slightly different different things. Um, the other item um I wanted to point out is that we are currently seeing a large portion of individuals over the age of sixty having received their vaccine. When you look at that group in conglomerate, nearly three out of four people over the age of sixty have been vaccinated. A few moments ago, I showed you hospital data and you know, you see the number of people in the hospital declining significantly from where we were in December. And I attribute a large portion of this decline to our vaccination effort for our senior citizens here in our community. So wonderful news. We know the vaccine's working. We know that the vaccine is safe. We know the vaccine is effective. And we know for the population that got hit the hardest, we know that we're being successful. We will continue to put a lot of effort into getting the rest of our population vaccinated. And I know uh there are tons of efforts throughout Hamilton County to do so, and I'll touch on a couple of those here in a coming slide. I get asked often, are we kind of finished vaccinating those people that are over eighty? Um, and the answer is no. Each week I look at the percentage of population in each of these age groups that have received their vaccine. And each week, particularly for this the senior groups over sixty, I see their percentage go up one or two percentage points. So we are continuing to make progress within those groups as well as seeing the increase in individuals under the age of sixty. So it's not safe to say we're finished with eighty-year-olds. We are continuing to vaccinate them and more and more individuals are vaccinated each week, which is also great news. You know, we look at that goal. I'm also also often asked, are we going to be able to get everybody to eighty percent? That's a very lofty goal. And we clearly have done so with those individuals that are between seventy and seventy-four. And really anyone over the age of sixty-five, we're getting very close to hitting that eighty percent mark. So I think it's possible to do with our entire population. It will just take a little bit more time. Some folks, we may have to do a little more convincing or let them understand a little bit more about the safety. But I'm very optimistic that we as a community will continue to make progress in this regard. When you break down uh vaccination by zip code, this data is provided by the Ohio Department of Health to help health departments and partners plan where vaccine efforts need to go. There are three zip codes in Hamilton County that are below where everyone else is. Those three zip codes include four, five, two, three, two, which is Winton Hills and Winton Place, four, five, two, two, five, which is North Fairmount, Camp Washington and English Woods, and four, five, two, oh, five, which is Price Hill. While all three of these zip codes fall outside of the jurisdiction that I serve, I want to reassure this commission that my counterpart in the city of Cincinnati, Health Commissioner Moore, is really focusing similar to what we're doing and making sure that we're bringing vaccine to communities. They are doing a variety of uh church vaccine clinics. They're doing mobile vaccine clinics. And they're actually partnering with us to use the mobile vans that were purchased by the commissioners. So we're really trying a whole bunch of different strategies to make sure that folks have access and the opportunity to choose to take the vaccine if they want it. So lots of great work happening there as well. You know, um, the other big announcement, lots happening since I last met with the commission. Um, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine or the Janssen vaccine, as you know, was put on hold. This past Friday, that hold was lifted. Basically, the FDA had time to look at the data and to come back together and say that overall the Janssen vaccine is safe. They had data suggesting that there were fifteen cases of the unusual blood clotting disorder that occurred over the administration of nearly eight million doses. And so after reviewing that data and taking a pause, they decided that it's very rare, as the data would suggest. But it was also another opportunity with this new understanding of a symptom to make sure that our medical community was updated and knowledgeable on how to treat should they see somebody coming into the hospital with these symptoms. So essentially, somebody who has these symptoms will now have a better opportunity for a better health outcome because the doctors are educated. So looking forward, um, we do have vaccine in our community. We offer Janssen at some of our clinics. We offer Janssen to Homebound. But most of our our opportunities, we are offering a choice. We don't want to force somebody to take Janssen if they're not comfortable with it. But also, we know that there are still a lot of people that really like the concept of one vaccination and finished. So we are uh as we get Janssen as a health department, we are going to continue to make that available at our clinics and make sure that the public has access to it. Um, yesterday at our uh tuberculosis clinic, which is parked at the intersection, our tuberculosis clinic is at the intersection of Highland and East McMillan. We tried out a new concept. We essentially didn't announce it ahead of time. We set up a van, a vaccine van and a couple of tents. Then we had an individual stand next to the traffic light pointing out that we had walk-ins and anyone who wanted the vaccine could stop over and get vaccinated. Now, our goal was really uh we were set up to handle about fifty people and then we were going to shut it down. We were planning on being there for two hours and we were planning on staffing it with three or four people. And uh ultimately, uh several of my staff went out and observed the the site. So we did have more than three or four people there. But um the goal was to make sure that this concept would work as we go into other communities. And we saw about twenty people yesterday at this clinic. And while that's not as many as I was hoping, I was really hoping to see the full fifty show up. Um, I will say, when I talked to those individuals, they were people that said, you know, I'm scared of getting vaccinated. I wasn't going to do it, but since you're here, I'm pulling in. Let's get it done. And uh it was really exciting to see. And uh we will continue to do this model moving forward in various communities that uh our agency serves. So look for more of that to come. And the last slide I have is just to reiterate all of the great things that our team and many, many providers are doing. A couple of weeks ago, we set up at a manufactured home park. We'll continue to do events like that, sort of similar to the the alongside the road model that I just shared. We continue to set up at churches. Um, we have about twenty schools signed up for vaccine last week, this week and next week. We'll be going and vaccinating those sixteen and older individuals. One school is actually promoting it within their community. It's a school project and uh so we might see some community members at the vaccine clinic. We continue to work with businesses within our community. And we are shifting our base of operations as elections start to pick up at the Board of Elections and they need the space where we're currently operating. We are shifting some of our operations up to the Sharonville Convention Center. As you know, though, those those models of larger clinics um have not been as popular, so we'll closely monitor that. And if we start to see those types of clinics stagnate, we'll shift resources as well. That is all I have prepared. I'm happy to take any additional questions.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh for your comprehensive report. Um, I'll open it up for our commissioners if they have any questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
Uh, thank you, um, Commissioner Kestner for all of your work and certainly all of our health commissioners uh that are our partners. Um, one of the things that you brought up, uh and we knew that this would probably uh shift. Originally, we didn't have uh the uh distribution, so everybody wanted the doses. We didn't have enough doses. Now the thing has switched. We have the supply. Um, and now we're working into the harder um folks to get it. And um, as you had, I want to thank you for putting those zip codes up because we still aren't impacting uh that area. Um, and so I know that uh Director uh Moore uh and others are working on that as well. Um, today I was on with um Willie Cunningham, who I believe will be on with Commissioner Dreehouse next week at the briefing. And he had me on and one thing he asked, he said, where is this bus? Uh, so that we could be out um going uh doing some more creative things that we're going to have to do. I really think where we are at this point, um, not from the distribution side, but we need a new marketing strategy campaign that will go into the next phase of the shots. Uh, we're now got to go after younger people, people who are are not as enthused, they're not waiting in line to go. Uh, they're not our seniors, uh men who don't like to go to the doctor anyway. Uh, no matter what race you are, they don't like to go into the doctor. Um, and so, you know, it's the moms or the wives or uh, you know, the daughters that are getting men to have to come out. Um, and certainly what we saw at Paul Brown Stadium, which I I was not there. Uh, but some things that was learned, it's not the facility without the people. Uh, when we go to Paul Brown Stadium, we go down there for a football game. We go down there to tailgate. We go down there for the Cincinnati Music Festival. Uh, so if we had something like Joe Borro down there or Ikey Woods down there uh getting the shot, then then Paul Brown becomes into play. Uh, so um certainly want to uh look at that and um and Jeff, I was happy to tell Willie is we're waiting on the prosecutor's office to get this paperwork so we can get this bus out there. Uh, but we need to be partnering uh with a new style of campaign uh at Kings Island, and I I want you to talk about this. Understand Kings Island, no mask needed. It's gonna be a lot of people at Kings Island ready to go and ride the rides and come out. Um, maybe you could talk a little bit about that. There'll be no mask uh requirement at uh Kings Island uh for this summer. So now that the mask will be lifted, some of it, um, now that the summer's out, people want to get out uh and and have a good time. Um, I think uh we need to now relook at a new marketing strategy as someone coming from the marketing world uh that will now target the next group of folks that we're going to need to get to that eighty percent. So can you talk about Kings Island and what's happening there?
You know, honestly, Commissioner, I haven't uh read up at all about Kings Island. I know the general guidance is shifting when you're outside and you can socially distance, masks aren't required, small groups masks aren't required. But I'm not familiar with their policy up in Warren County.
Yeah, I um I wanted to say that because we got a lot of people from Hamilton County that go to Kings Island. So um, and they had something on TV saying that no mask will be required to go to Kings Island. And I know the governor at two o'clock is gonna uh say something and then the president as well. So as those things begin to shift, I just want to put out that that's one of the things that I think we should uh work on, not just you're you're doing your job, but also how we can uh provide a more toward a new type of campaign that will hit this harder to serve, younger, hipper, cooler, however you want to call it, group of people who um we can't reach them the traditional way. We got to pull up at the Dora and have shots available. We got to pull up at FC Home Opener with the bus and it's got to be cool and hip. Um, we've got to pull up uh Cinco de Mayo. We got to pull up with salsa and be able to to uh vaccinate people. So that's something I'm looking for us to be able to work on uh as we try to get more people to take the shot, which is critical for us to be able to come out and be free at this summer.
You know, it is all part of the strategy. You know, we have to base everything cautiously on science, but at some point, if we're not able to get some freedoms back and get some uh some life back, then it does become a barrier. And I think the government, the Centers for Disease Control are are really trying to shift that policy now that they have science to back up that it is safe to get outside. It is safe to eat outside. And these policy changes are really important, particularly for younger folks. Why am I getting vaccinated if it's not giving me the ability to eat outside safely? And so I think we're starting to see some of those federal shifts as the data supports it. And I think locally, we can do a lot to promote those um new freedoms and to make sure folks know how to safely get back to normal.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, so thank you, Greg, for the update. Appreciate it always. It's all and it's an ever-moving, you know, conversation about this. Um, because we are in this different phase now where we've got enough vaccine. We just need to get it to people and get people to take it. Um, so I do, I want to highlight something that you said. Um, you are moving around the county um at various locations, and I know you've been doing this um both pop-up and also in bricks and mortar facilities like rec centers and municipal buildings. Um, you're also doing seventeen schools within the next few weeks, from my understanding. Um, and so I do want to highlight that partnership um so that we can get some of the students that are eligible, which is just a fraction of some of the students uh in these schools, but still uh a very important initiative to partner with the schools. And so I asked Greg, um, Madam Commissioners, a couple of days ago for the list of facilities that public health is going to in the next couple of weeks, and it it is really illuminating. So Greg, I'm going to ask you to do do a favor and 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 send it out to everyone because you can see that these schools are located all over the county. Um, and in addition to that, we've been reaching out to um the elected officials on these um jurisdiction calls once a week and asking them not only if there um are community gathering places like churches and rec centers, but also businesses. Um, trying to get the business community to host some of the vaccine sites. Um, and just as a reminder, the threshold's like forty to fifty. Um, if they can get those uh folks there, whether they're employees or not for a vaccine, then um I know public health is more than ready to go and administer that clinic, uh which Greg, I know you've done a couple of times. So anyway, thank you for what you're doing. Um, I was asked about the Paul Brown Initiative um yesterday and I think, you know, it it's one of those learning experiences where you say, okay, so people are less interested in the mass vac sites evidently right now. Uh, and just as a reminder, the city of Cincinnati and City Public Health uh put that on, you know, and and I was supportive of that. Uh, they did vaccinate a thousand people, so that's nothing to sneeze at. However, um, we do need to continue to look at other ways to reach out to the folks that are still not vaccinated. So thank thanks again for what you're doing. And I'll look forward to uh continued reports out as to your progress.
Thank you, and it is encouraging, Commissioner Kestner, um, that the numbers are going up as relates to who's getting the the vaccination. And so we just have to recognize that uh we have the vaccinations available. There are some people, no matter what you do, no matter where you have the site, that they just have decided um that they don't want to take the shot. And it's up to us to continue to encourage them. So um right now, I think things are going great. The numbers are going up. We're going all over the place. And um I'm just excited that more people are doing that, but of course, we need more for that herd immunity. So thank you so much for your comprehensive report again.
Thank you very much. Happy.
Madam President?
Yes.
If if I could just just very quickly just offer an administrative note. Um, I know we've been keeping the board apprised on the the status of the of the short and long-term options as it relates to the uh the 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 mobile tech bus that we want to deploy out into the community. I just for the board's uh knowledge, we sent the agreement over to the prosecutor's office just yesterday. So um, uh, folks in the in the community who might be tracking the the status of that, the the prosecutor's office only had it for a day here. Uh, they've been doing a great job turning around um our uh the flood of agreements that we've been sending over to them. So I just wanted the board to be aware that the uh from a timing perspective that we just sent that to them yesterday. So we'll be looking to uh talk with them about reviewing that agreement and getting the the bus uh activated as quickly as possible.
Thank you so much, Jeff.
You're welcome.
So our our second agenda item is Hamilton County Energy Report. Ralph Lenny is here from facility. Hi, Ralph.
Good afternoon.
I read the first page of that packet and it blew me away, just the first page. So I'll let you talk a little bit more about it.
Well, I figure I might do a test on the whole sixty-page report, but I get a feeling you don't want that.
No.
Uh, let me share my screen here. Okay, um, this is basically a review. Uh, the first slide is our energy uh mission statement. Uh, basically several years ago, uh when Topro two was here, we put together some energy uh objectives. Uh, one of them was to basically put together our energy uh mission statement. And one of the ideas was to use the minimum amount of the energy needed uh in a timely manner to support the environment, minimize a heat loss, a heat gain in our buildings, uh, look into uh very efficiency in how we operate uh the buildings. Look into uh life cycle costs. When I came here in the year two thousand and one, the county already won an award for life cycle costing uh in the year two thousand from uh NACO. And then the other thing was to basically look at a way of benchmarking. We chose to use the EPA Energy Star uh rating system uh in order to do it. Uh, basically, this is a list of buildings that the county facilities department maintains. Uh, roughly fifteen buildings all the way from courthouses to the nine-one-one center of the corner facility and we've started maintaining the new one uh as of last week. Uh, the Justice Center, the Detention Center, uh, the office buildings. We do not take care of the stadiums or the parking garages uh or the engineers of facilities. Uh, one of the things that uh basically after I came here, deregulation had occurred, particularly in the world of natural gas. Uh, I was heavily involved in the other county. I came from Cuyahoga. Uh, being one of the initial counties along with Hamilton County with the CCAO uh presently, a saying of an agreement presently, we are have agreement through the CCA for natural gas. We've been doing it for twenty-plus years. Uh, the manager to the county is Paul Brown Stadium and the garages. The county engineer and DDC facilities are able to piggyback on our agreement uh if they want to. My energy report does not talk about that. In the year two thousand ten, electrical power, we went out and bid it. It became deregulated a few years before that. But the situation was that uh every time we went out to get prices, Duke Energy was still cheaper than a few companies who was trying to provide. And the same thing there is the stadiums and the county engineer and DDS has chosen uh to piggyback on those agreements. Uh, dollar savings as a result of bidding out the electric power through uh the purchasing department. And then for CCAO, we have accumulated savings of almost ten million dollars during that time period. Uh, been very pleased and and that's on the the side of your bill for the electric cost. We still have to pay the uh T and D uh natural gas uh in that same area. We've been able since the year two thousand about one point two million dollars. We've been able to uh save direct costs uh through the way that we have approached it. Uh, and we've been involved with the CCAO from day one and that. In fact, Hamilton County was one of the first ones to get all the bonding uh for that program to be set up. Uh, this shows how we've been very successful with the economy. Uh, we keep going out uh and bidding. Uh, this last, uh, we got three years through the purchase, three times through our purchasing department, a thermal tech engineer is our consultant. The last time we've signed an agreement uh with the CCAO Service Corporation. I'm on the executive board overseeing all the purchasing uh as a representative from Hamilton County. And understanding how well the electric program had progressed over the years, uh, we brought to attention on the commissioners and they agreed to sign the agreement. They went out through Palmer Energy and we got the lowest rate we've ever had uh with it, which means our savings will be, you know, continued through the year twenty uh twenty-three. This just happens to show each year the amount of savings. In the beginning, the savings was very high uh due to the fact that Duke's rates was very high. Over the years, their uh rates has come down uh and our savings has decreased, which we anticipated. Also, the other thing is you take a look, our usage in two thousand and ten. Uh, you take a look at it in two thousand and twenty, it's twenty-five percent less electricity being uh used in our buildings. And I'll explain the reasons why when we get to that, but that's also why the dollar savings is not as much. A deregulated natural gas, uh, we've been involved, like I said, since the year two thousand. Uh, my predecessor started it. Uh, and I was doing to start the same thing up in Cuyahoga County that I came down here. Uh, we continue with it. Our agreement presently goes through twenty twenty-four, and that's really March of two thousand and twenty-four because the year starts in uh April uh with way natural gas is done. And this one has a little bit more risk to it from the standpoint that uh we are buying uh, CCAO is buying the gas on the open market and there is hedging that's done. Uh, we've been very pleased with the results. Anytime there's a decision to do hedging, uh, I'm involved with the the approval of that along with the other people on the uh committees. Here's the amount of dollars that we have saved uh each year. As you can see, our natural gas usage, uh, it goes up and down. We're still lower than what we were our year in twenty-ten. We kind of use it as our base year. Uh, it is affected by the weather, the temperature, how cold it is out there. So uh, it is a little bit more weather dependent than electricity is. Deregulation, this gives you some more background on it. Uh, one of the things that we are looking at is making some changes to the program. Uh, this is a case where we can curtail the usage of natural gas in the courthouse. Uh, the boilers are on all year in the courthouse because it provides steam to the Justice Center. They need it for their cooking. They need it for the laundry. Uh, also, we run a little bit of steam for the Uh, also we run a little bit of steam for the hot water system in this building as well as over there. This program's going to end in two thousand and twenty, basically due, in two thousand and twenty-one, uh, basically due to the fact we're having new boilers installed in the Justice Center. Uh, better efficiency, uh, and as a result, we have walked away from Duke Energy. But over the course of time, this has saved the county, uh, over eight hundred thousand dollars. Here's a chart that's showing it. Uh, one thing that started to happen, uh, as our amount of gas usage almost has went in half since two thousand and four to twenty twenty, uh, since we've been doing this, uh, the impact we have starting around two thousand and thirteen and going on. Several times we had interruptions where the request was made for us to turn off the gas, start up the boilers in the courthouse. They're on oil, uh, and then we had costs that we had to pay for, for overtime and replacement of oil. So, uh, as our usage has decreased and timing, we are walking away from this program, but has saved that amount of money over the, that time period. Right now, the energy conservation plan was started, uh, before I came in nineteen ninety-eight. We have constantly looked at it, updated it at least twice since then. Uh, how we use this plan is when we look at replacing any major piece of equipment, building system and, and the buildings. We take a look at which ones are best to replace in a timely manner. What decreases are going to be in energy usage? What is the impact on operating it? How can we reduce it? So we have a plan that's been in place. This ties into the capital CIP plan that we present every year to, uh, the budget department to get approval. Uh, as we looked at it, there's been over twenty-seven million dollars saved by these programs over, uh, the time period that's been in place. We have been very pleased with the results. Uh, I can give you, uh, you know, in that sixty-page report I gave you, there is a lot more detail as to how we have achieved it. But the key is there's been twelve million direct savings. This kind of chart here gives you an idea of the electrical power usage. Dollars is one thing, but I wanted to show that we actually did reduction in usage of electric power. Uh, this also affects the environment. This shows there's been a decrease, uh, in greenhouse, uh, emissions. Uh, it is healthier for the planet, especially since we're in a time period where we celebrate Earth Day last week. Uh, natural gas usage, the same way it shows it going up and down, the actual decrease in natural gas. Uh, the other program that we started, my first came here was Energy Star Program. The idea was to take a look at how well we were managing our buildings. And the goal is our key buildings downtown, our downtown campus buildings that qualify is to give them to the top twenty-five percent. Uh, this was a challenge to my, uh, assistant director, Tony Montre, and his building managers to achieve this and work toward it. As well as Thermal Tech Engineering, who's our MEP, um, design partner. Would then know that when they look at replacing something, what we were trying to get to. Uh, we update this every year. Also, this, uh, information, the Energy Star portfolio is being, uh, provided to, uh, District twenty thirty, uh, are the efforts by the city of Cincinnati to decrease, uh, electric usage by fifty percent. And we provide this information that goes into their reports. And I'm also, uh, a member of a couple of committees there. Uh, as you can see, presently, we are putting thirteen buildings into it. Uh, the six major buildings have been tracked since two thousand and four, and then in two thousand and eight, we added two more buildings to that. This next slide shows you the success rate. Alms and Deputy, when we took over managing it in two thousand and eight, went from a rating of forty-one to a rating now up in the nineties, which means it's in the top ten percent of managed buildings, uh, in the country. Also, you can see the other buildings, anything in red, we have hit the Energy Star rating. Uh, we are challenged at the courthouse because they keep changing the rules, uh, due to us supplying steam and natural gas across the, uh, uh, the road to the Justice Center. We anticipate probably in two thousand and twenty-two, we will be back getting our ratings in the eighties when those boilers are taken off, offline. I feel this is one of the best ways to show the taxpayer in the county that we are excellent stewards of our buildings. We take care of them. We maintain them as well as, uh, we have a way to show the public how well we're doing nationwide. Performance contracting. We started back in two thousand and nine, looking to find a firm to come in and take a look at our building, take advantage of House Bill three hundred and do some audits. We had several firms throughout Ohio responded. Their, uh, Amoresco was chosen to do the industrial grade audits. Uh, they identified the dollar savings we could make in our buildings. We implemented in the year, uh, two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. Uh, one thing that's good is they have guaranteed dollar savings, which has been met. Uh, they also give us annual reports showing where we're at, how well we're doing it. We went back again, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, uh, started a data and audit. Uh, we are going to implement those starting in two thousand and twenty-one and they should be completed in two thousand and twenty-two. This next chart really shows you the impact of performance contracting on our buildings. Uh, everything that's in blue was a dollar savings I had previously mentioned due to, uh, the bidding out of the electric power. Everything that's shown in, uh, the pinkish color is the additional dollar savings, uh, due to not using electricity, uh, because of the improved systems we have, the changes in lighting, changes in boilers. So that is what the real combined savings was, uh, to my budget as well as helping the general fund. I didn't have to come and ask for, say in two thousand and eighteen, I know Bergen knows I like to ask for money, but I didn't have to come and ask for one point eight million dollars. I would have, we had never had to do that. Same thing in natural gas and the savings there has been even more tremendous, uh, with the improvements versus what we saved in bidding out natural gas. So it shows that the performance contracting has worked in the last ten years, has been impacted. Obviously, the first couple of years, the systems had to be put in place. And around two thousand and twelve and thirteen, we started seeing, uh, the greatest savings. The other thing out of performance contracting has been our dollar savings and water issue. We have only one place to go buy doll, uh, water from and only one sewer system, uh, to get rid of it. But by decreasing the amount of water with the changes in, uh, our faucets, uh, with other systems that we get reduction. This has been the dollar savings, uh, due to the improvements we have made, uh, in our facilities. Total dollar savings, as you can see, uh, has been accumulated nine point eight in electric. Performance contracting has been about six point five. Natural gas is about eight hundred thousand. And, uh, performance contracting is almost, uh, two million dollars. So when you total it all up, we also had a decrease in water sewer about one point three. And then the interrupted program I told you about that we're walking away from eight hundred thousand. Yeah, these all up that comes to about twenty-four million dollars that the taxpayer did not have to fund for the operation of buildings with having a very well-defined energy management program in place. Taking advantage of all the things that's out there, including being very aggressive in keeping our facilities in good shape. Last, I want to talk about, uh, what's happening in the future. Uh, we estimate from this new energy grade audit we just done, the work has started already in our buildings. Uh, the savings will be additional three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, uh, from this. And, uh, and savings may even be higher than that. Uh, Amoresco is very conservative. Uh, they struggle with coming up with numbers because our cost for electricity is so low in natural gas. You don't get as much bang, uh, for the buck in a way. Uh, the other thing we will continue, every chance we can get for Duke Energy to give us money to replace things, uh, in their smart, uh, program, we take advantage of it. The last thing down here, the county last year entered into an intent of letter for future, for future purchase of solar power through the CCAO, uh, from a, a future plant to be located in probably southwestern Ohio. Uh, most that we can purchase is between twenty, twenty-five percent. And that is, uh, programs in progress right now. Uh, the RFP was issued in October. Uh, they have received five, uh, different, uh, eleven responses. They're down to five firms. Uh, if the only reason they have not come back to the county with any type of agreements is they were waiting for the state, uh, which occurred last month, to make a change where counties can enter to an agreement more than ten years to buy electrical power. And that was passed. Uh, now they're evaluating the responses and they're working with, uh, the Prosecutor's, uh, Association to come up with, uh, one agreement, uh, that all counties can sign. So I probably will bring it back to you later, uh, next year. And any questions?
Well, Ralph, I am, like I said at the beginning, I am overwhelmed. I'm looking at your, uh, screen and I think item, the slide number twenty-three talked about twenty-four million dollar savings. That's nothing, uh, to, to sneeze at. And so I've just been clapping and the hurrowing and this needs to be really, people need to know that, uh, the, the constituents need to know. Not only are we trying to help them, we're also trying to be more efficient as a county. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank your staff for your innovative thinking and taking chances on things that you thought would work, that would benefit us and, um, for the commission also agreeing to that. So I just, just thank you so much. I'll open it up for, um, our commissioners. Uh, Vice President Reese, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, yes, I just want to say I concur with that and certainly we like to hear, um, the savings. And I like the fact when you walk through it, you talked about, uh, the need to be creative, uh, the need to take risk, um, a calculated, uh, risk, um, the need to also be able to pivot when necessary. Uh, so, um, I just like the fact that you had to put so much into this to come up with a creative package that saves money for, uh, for the taxpayers. Uh, wanted to, could you talk a little bit about the solar component? Um, certainly I'm very interested in that, um, as, uh, that's the future of savings. Cause I know you said you, uh, are going to be involved in that with the, uh.
Right now, uh, there's fifty-six counties and several municipalities, organizations who, uh, are signing a letter of intent. Uh, the idea is, and it's been talked about for several years, I, I, like I said, I was on the executive committee, trying to find a way to bring solar power to the counties without a risk factor involved. This way the counties will not own it. There's no risk after the twenty-year time period. We do not have to tear it down. We do not have any dollars involved. Uh, we still have all the creds that we need, uh, to deal with some of the stuff in, in the power. The timing is perfect because our, um, agreement, our present electric agreement will be up in the year two thousand and twenty-four. That's roughly the time that this will take off in the last quarter. So, uh, we'll, we, we will be rebidding our electric power with a twenty percent reduction in our usage. And that will be covered with solar. And we can't go any higher because there's something known as the, the sun disappears and there's clouds in southwest Ohio and battery storage backup right now. Uh, it will bring jobs to Ohio. This, uh, farm will be. It'll probably be located somewhere southwest of, uh, Columbus. There's three locations right now that's being looked at. Uh, it's going to be huge. It's going to be like three hundred and fifty, uh, million kilowatts. Very large, as large as a small, uh, power plant. So, uh, but there is no financial risk to the county. Uh, there is no investment. It's just that the agreement is signed and, and we go forward. And we have a letter of intent and we can still walk away from it. Uh, the presentation will be given. Obviously the prosecutor will have to bless the terms. But the idea for this to go forward, every one of the participants has to sign the same purchase agreement. So it gives all the lawyers something to do to agree on, which could be very interesting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ralph, for the thorough presentation. Um, I just wanted to note on the top page of the report. It says since two thousand and one, there have been a savings of twenty-four million. So Ralph has been on the cutting edge of this, uh, which we don't always say about Hamilton County, but we can on this one. Uh, and say that, you know, we've been looking, uh, to conserve energy and do things efficiently, uh, for years now under Ralph's leadership. So I, I too want to congratulate you on the savings that have been achieved for you and the taxpayers of Hamilton County. And also, um, you know, the wave of the future is the solar, the wind and, um, you know, we, we have been taking steps to, to make Hamilton County on the cutting edge of that new technology as well. So thank you for your work there. Um, I have two quick questions. One is, um, how was last year impacted by COVID? And, you know, given the fact that some of the staff was not in the, the county buildings, um, was there an impact to the figures?
The impact is in the water usage. That's where we saw the greatest impact, the decrease. Uh, we still have to heat the buildings, so that costs very little savings in the air and natural gas. There's been some savings in electricity due to people's napping around the computers, some ice being turned off, uh, but not as much as, uh, we anticipated. We had to also though increase our air circulation through our handlers because of, uh, COVID nineteen to increase the standards, to increase the number of cycles. So that increased the usage of electricity as well as increased to a certain degree, usage of water in the cooling towers to, to keep the, the flow going. So, uh, there's been savings. I, I anticipate, uh, if we ever bring everybody back, the big increase is going to be in, in usage of water, uh, through the restrooms and through the break areas and, and maybe increasing the cooling in, uh, some of the buildings. Uh, gotta realize we had, uh, three buildings that we can't turn off. The Justice Center, they're our heaviest, one of our heaviest users, uh, the Youth Detention Center, nine-one-one, they're twenty-four seven. And sideline, that's one of the reasons we get some good, uh, electric rates. Because we can, we use electricity at night on the weekends and power suppliers wants to have a load at night, uh, to offset their, their load during the day. And that's how we can get some better prices.
Hmm. Okay. Um, and one other question related to that. So I heard reports, uh, a number of months ago related to the Justice Center. And at the time, there were not as many COVID positive cases in our Justice Center compared to some of the other counties throughout the state. And some of it I thought was being attributed to the moisture in the air and something that you referred to earlier in your, your report. Um, did, did you hear that? And if so, and, and, and I will try to verify if you haven't. Um, and might we consider making sure that that kind of not only air circulation, but that kind of moisture density is present in a place like the Justice Center, which evidently reduced the spread of the disease?
Your statement is true. We have a very low humidity rating in that building and other buildings due to how we maintain them. So yes, that is a true statement.
Well, yeah, and so you talked about some adjustments related to the courthouse and the Justice Center. I would, um, I'm wondering if that will continue, I guess.
Oh, yes, yes. There, there's not going to be any change to the airflow increases as well as we have brought in some of those smaller units where we don't have the air farm. We had that study done last summer. Uh, and that's why you see one downstairs in, uh, the lobby there, uh, at the Toproto Center.
Oh, is that, wait, 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 wait. What is that thing? I've noted that. What, I don't know what it is. What is that?
It is, it is to increase the airflow as well as to capture any, uh, bacteria or any viruses that's in the air. And areas where we did not have enough airflow that was needed, uh, based on the number of people that could be present and the size of the, uh, the room. And we have them spread throughout, uh, different locations and different buildings throughout the county.
I wa, I was wondering what that was. Thank you, Ralph. Cause there are a couple of.
It's a noisemaker, as, as some people would say.
Yeah, yeah. I, I was like, huh, wonder what that is. Um, so, okay. Well, very good. Well, thank you, uh, again for your presentation.
Thank you all.
And thank you, Ralph. And I know my picture disappeared for a while. I'm having a little trouble with my computer, but I, I did hear every word that you said. So thank you once again for coming and for all that you do.
And Madam President?
Yes.
If I could, just very quickly, just two quick follow-ups. Number one, just, uh, as the board probably is, recalls, we use CARES dollars for the purchase of those, um, air circulation, uh, portable units that, that Ralph talked about, of which we have, uh, two in our, um, in our, in the lobby of this building. Secondly, um, Commissioner Reese had asked about solar and since people walking. walking on the street probably don't get a chance to see it unless you happen to look from a, a, a building higher than the courthouse or the Justice Center, or you're up in the air somehow. Ralph, do you want to talk about where we currently have solar deployed? It's not as big as what we're talking about doing with the power purchase agreement, but you want to just talk about the buildings where we currently have solar deployed as an energy savings strategy?
We have, two buildings we have been deployed. One's the Justice Center on the south building roof, as well on the county courthouse. And courthouse had to be set so far back because of historical reasons. You have to be able not to see them from the street. They're there basically to heat water, domestic water. So we do not have to have a small boiler or a large hot water here heating it. So it's a dollar savings. If we do have a problem, we can just turn a valve and everything's taken care of. But that has been a dollar savings that, that we've done through the first Ameresco project back in 2010. So they've been up there 10 years now.
Thanks, Ralph.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks a lot, Ralph. We'll move forward to our next item on the agenda. Lick Run Project Update. Diana Christie. Hi, Diana.
Hi. Good afternoon, Madam President and Commissioners. I feel like it's been a while since I've been on. So it's good to see you all. Well, we're here today to give a project update on Lick Run. This is something we've talked about quite a bit over the last several years, but I think today we're excited to share some of the, the results of this vision and, you know, just talk about where the project's at, which is, it looks like it's a near complete project. So if I could, I'm going to start, if I can do this correctly, with a short video. It's less than two minutes. And this was actually from a news clip. Let's see, I'm going to do this. So this is just a, a flyover. And if you can see it.
Yeah.
Are you all seeing this now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to skip because we don't need to hear the news clip.
It's like now.
Okay.
Awesome job by T.R. Gorman.
Okay. So, and now I'm going to, if I can, go back to my presentation. And let's see. Now, are you seeing the, the presentation slide?
No, we're still seeing the news slide.
Oh, no. Okay, hold on. Let me stop and just start that again. There we go. Okay. Now, does it look like a presentation?
Yes, it does.
All right. Getting better at this, but there's always still something. That's a little bit difficult. So again, today, we're, we're just going to give a, a project update. And there's so much to talk about. So I, I thought that the, the video was a nice overview to share. You know, just to get a sense of the, the size and the magnitude of this project and really how transformative it has been for the South Fairmont neighborhood. So just to go back and explain what this project is and why MSD undertook this work. So the Lick Run Greenway, it's part of what we call the Revised Original LMCPR, which just stands for Lower Mill Creek Partial Remedy. And that's a bundle of projects that were required under our consent decree. I think, you know, most of you have heard and understand that the, the plan that was agreed to initially with MSD and the regulators required a deep tunnel. That deep tunnel was a solution that would have achieved the amount of combined sewer overflow reduction that was required under the consent decree. But it was a very expensive solution. It's exactly as it sounds, a very deep tunnel underground that would have essentially conveyed all of the combined sewage that currently, you know, much of it was overflowing during high flows. So it would have conveyed it to our, our treatment plant. So while that is a solution, and it is sometimes the only way to achieve the reduction in combined sewer overflows, we really wanted to look for a better way. And I think MSD, the city, the county, all agreed at the time that if we're going to be spending hundreds of millions of dollars, is there something that would have a better impact for the community and the environment overall? So in getting the, the LMCPR, which is again a bundle of projects, the Lick Run is one of those, approved, we were able to save over $200 million than what we would have spent had we proceeded with the deep tunnel. So it's a significant, it was a significant shift. And this project really is, it's been recognized as a national model of green infrastructure. It's, it's a sustainable approach. It is not all green infrastructure. It does have a lot of engineered and sewer systems below ground and above ground that are going to require investment and maintenance. But this solution really did have community support and, and I think support from, obviously from the regulators because it was approved. I wanted to share this photo here as we talk about, you know, this community. So this was shared recently with me and others, perhaps some of you. It was a Facebook post and I just cut it exactly as it was to give credit to those who, who dug this up. But that is actually a photo of the Lick Run, either from the late 1800s or early 1900s. And so I'm going to talk about it later. But one of the things about the Lick Run as it existed, it was a stream. However, it wasn't always, it wasn't always a running stream. It ran dry in many times of the year when there wasn't a lot of flow. So again, really just to, to illustrate how this project is a transformative project for the South Fairmont community and also achieves very significant water quality improvements for all of Hamilton County. This is a picture from one of those drone flyovers from before. And then you can see, it says current. I don't know the exact date of that, that aerial photo. But this area, you know, the, one of the reasons really that, that this project made sense was not only just the topography of this area where you have a valley and you have a lot of natural hillsides still where we could collect the stormwater, you know, through green infrastructure. But we also had a corridor that was mostly filled with either abandoned or underutilized properties, what we might characterize as brownfields. And so, you know, there wasn't an easy way to bring investment into this community. So, you know, really leveraging the MSD project to build something that also created a community benefit was, you know, the vision that we all saw and really what we're, what we are now seeing as a reality. So those are just some of the, you know, the, the overall figures of the construction project. So the project budget and schedule status, now we've talked a little bit more in detail about the project and, and the budget. I guess it was in the middle of last year, I believe, was the last time we updated you all on this. So this is really, not to get into all of the details, but happy to answer questions. But I think the most important thing is, you know, how much is this costing? So again, this is the project budget for the Lick Run Greenway. So it's not the entire bundle of projects. It's the, it's, it's that system that you, you've just seen. The original estimate that MSD had before we went through all of the design phase was, you know, that 126 there that you see at the top. After the project had been through the detailed design, the, the estimate that we used for putting the project out to bid, and this is also the estimate that the commissioners authorized and appropriated funds for, that was 105.8 million. And once we put the project out to bid, the low bid was Kukocing, and it was just under 90 million. Now, as we've, you know, been going through this project for several years, as you can see there, we've approved to date about 13 million in change orders. So that brings the project back up closer to, you know, what MSD had estimated, you know, initially. And I think before everything is complete, although we're about 96% complete, there is still the likelihood that we will have additional change orders approved. And there are some, some things outstanding that are likely to bring that total contract budget over, over the 1 point, or the 105 million and likely 110 or perhaps a little higher. But it's really impossible to provide an exact number on that today. The key milestones in terms of schedule, so we, we authorized construction to proceed back in the summer of 2017. And here's where it gets a little complicated in the way we track our completion dates. But the consent decree requires a substantial completion under the consent decree means that the project is functioning from the standpoint of removing the stormwater or whatever the, you know, the required consent decree obligation was. So last January, we had completed all of the conveyance systems, all of the storage, and we were able to essentially, at that point, say it's functioning for purposes of separating stormwater from our combined sewer and, and meeting the consent decree obligations. The project itself, though, had a lot more work to go. And, and that's the case with all of our projects. But this one in particular, because of the, the amount of, you know, additional features that are part of this overall project and public space that we've created. So if there are any questions on that, you know, or we can discuss them all at the end. But that was really, you know, the, kind of the snapshot of where we are. And again, you know, since, I know we've, we've shared all of the, the project details in the past, didn't want to, you know, spend too much time on the construction. But this slide just really shows the key project areas and how this, this Greenway functions. So as you can see, the numbers at the top correlate to the pictures. These are all, you know, components that have been completed to date. Again, it's all functioning from a, you know, a flow perspective. So, and, and generally speaking, the stormwater is conveyed to a, through traditional storm sewers. We also have above, above ground conveyance. We have green infrastructure like bio swales, detention basins. So those have all been constructed upstream from the Greenway. And the stormwater is then conveyed to a location, it's essentially near the Queen City bypass and Old Queen City Avenue. I don't know exactly where that is on, on this slide. The stormwater is conveyed to the Greenway, where it is then either conveyed above ground in the stream channel, or in times of high flow and, and larger rain events, we have the stormwater conveyance box that is underground, you know, that is a bioengineered, I mean, it's an engineered storm sewer underground. And then all of the flow will ultimately come to this pond before it is discharged into the Mill Creek. So all of the water that, that we're conveying through the Greenway here, whether it's in the above ground channel or in the below ground storm sewer, is stormwater. We have, this is complete separation. I think sometimes there's been just a little bit of confusion about there being, you know, underground, having some of the sanitary flow. And that's not the case. There is still, it's a combined, there's still a sanitary sewer that exists that is in, is still underground and will convey the sanitary flow to our wastewater treatment plant. But everything that is in this channel, both above ground and underground and in the pond, and ultimately goes to the outfall into the Mill Creek, is stormwater. So, you know, again, I, I think we've, we've spent a lot of time in the past talking about the project and how it works. But where we're at today is that we are really, you know, not only as a project now meeting consent decree and, and operating, you know, as a, as a functional storm sewer and stormwater improvement, we also have the, the rest of the project, which is the above ground public project that is taking shape and, you know, is, is really available to the community. This really presents both new opportunities and again, you know, the excitement of a community asset, but it also presents challenges. And this being such a, you know, a, a unique project and nothing like what MSD has ever done before. I want to talk about both those, you know, opportunities and challenges. So, you know, again, because the Lick Run Greenway, you know, it's functioning. We've been able to, you know, work through the operations of it now for over a year. We know that the, the Greenway is reducing CSOs and what we have sensors and monitoring, monitors that we're able to monitor the effectiveness of the Greenway. And we will be continuing to do that for a few more months and then to really be able to determine the performance of this system overall. The project was determined, or I guess our estimates are that we would be eliminating nearly half a billion gallons of combined sewer annually. So, you know, really, again, measuring the performance of this is something that's done over time now that it's functioning. As far as the operations of all of the sewer features, all of the, again, so we have storm sewers, we have bio swales, all of the plantings and, and the, the property itself in terms of the, the trees that have been planted are all now things that MSD is required to maintain and operate. We have a dedicated group in-house, that is our green infrastructure team. So they've already been, you know, really taking over this project from Kukocing. And, and we have a group of contractors, as you saw from that video, you know, that are responsible for the, the functionality of this project in its entirety. And, and really the size of this and the amount of green infrastructure that we're now maintaining is, is really unlike anything we had done previously. But there's another aspect of this project, and that is the, the public side of it. So again, when the decision was made to, to create this, this Greenway, you know, it is intended to be public space. It's intended to be a community asset to really return the, the area to somewhat of its natural state. Again, it's bioengineered, but you would have, you know, what is a, a small creek or stream that the public can then, you know, walk along, enjoy, and actually interact with in a sense to really create that, that public space and that amenity that didn't exist before. We also have green space and we have the recreational facilities that I will talk about in a minute. The, the, the opportunities, as I said, are, you know, the public being able to enjoy the space. The challenges are, this is an area now that has to be managed and maintained, just like any other open public space. So, you know, we've been working with partners, we've been working with everyone from the police, the public services for the city of Cincinnati, our transportation and engineering, on all sorts of issues, you know, and, and things that were all planned out before. But when it actually comes to, you know, turning this over and the public being, being out there and accessing it, you know, you have safety issues, just maintenance of, of lighting, trash collection, and all of those things. So Marianne Lynn Leder, who's on, has really been, and, and she's really been leading that effort and the, in terms of the operations and the partnership with all of the other agencies that are supporting this project. One in particular I wanted to mention was the Cincinnati Recreation Commission area because as you saw in the video, it's a pretty significant Because as you saw in the video, it's a pretty significant recreational space. This did exist in this area previously prior to our project. So there's, they did have a spray ground and the basketball courts on the spray ground was maintained. But the basketball courts and the playground and the shelters had to be, I guess, reconstructed. So all of that CRC property is now open and they are managing that space. And that's been since the middle of March. CRC has responsibilities for trash collection. Again, you know, access in terms of when the property is available for use. And, and things of that nature are all maintained by CRC under their, you know, under their rules. Public services, we've been working with in particular on collecting the trash and where we have trash receptacles all throughout the public space. So along the walkways and the street corners. So they will be collecting trash two times a week. With that though, we do see that litter is continuing to be a problem. So it, it doesn't necessarily help to just continue to put more trash cans out. People that don't want to throw things in trash unfortunately will just toss it wherever. So we're going to talk about in a minute, some of our other thoughts and, and plans to, you know, continue to keep this space clean and attractive for, for the public to come here. But, you know, we want it, we want it to be available for everybody. And this is an example here in this picture you're looking at of, you know, people that, that gathered at that shelter and, and just left their trash behind, assuming that, you know, this area is maintained twenty-four seven, you know, and it's not. It is again, public space, so all of the normal police and, and fire, you know, can be called. But we don't have people there to pick up trash after somebody, you know, has an event in our space. So we're working on those issues. And we'll talk a little bit more about it here. The next, I guess, kind of more significant challenge that we've seen are traffic accidents. So we, we know that this area is a heavily traveled corridor. That being said, we did modify intersections, built bridges. You know, we have, you know, overall the vision is that people will not just be using this as, you know, a highway in a sense. But we have seen accidents, so where they've been crashing into this railing. We're working on a plan to keep this from being a recurring problem. And, and we have contractors that can help us to repair and replace, probably in this case, this fencing. As you can see though, on the right, we actually had a vehicle crash through an area and go into the stream. And I, I think that was about a month ago now. So we're, we're very concerned about this and just it being an ongoing problem. So some of the, some of the discussions about traffic calming and some of the measures that are already in process that we've been working through with Cincinnati Department of Transportation Engineering. As you can see, also urban forestry and public services. So we are going to be doing additional line painting and curbs as part of the, the paving contracts. So Queen City Avenue is to be paved later this year. And, and when that takes place, there will be some, you know, some of the traffic calming measures as part of that work. But as an additional measure, we are coordinating to have trees planted on Westwood. Research shows that trees can be an effective barrier and also just kind of a deterrent in slowing down traffic and, and really kind of, you know, having a, not only a physical barrier, but also a calming measure in terms of this is not a space to be, you know, this is not a highway. So having those trees along those roadways is something that we plan on doing by the end of May. And we're coordinating that work. And then again, we're, we're really working with Cincinnati Police Department to increase surveillance and really try to, you know, enforce the speed limits and, and the other traffic requirements to slow people down. So the next thing I want to, want to mention is you all have hopefully received an invitation to a, a grand opening. We are really excited to do this. We of course are, we have all of the COVID precautions in place, but we are going to host an in-person but outdoor. We're calling it a ribbon tying event to really recognize that this was the, that this project was the result of a, a lot of partners and partnership with MSD, the county and, and the community. So we have invited also Ohio EPA, US EPA and, and the folks that have really been part of this project from the beginning. So again, because of COVID, you know, we're, we're limiting that and it's invite only event, but it will be in person onsite. And we, we hope the weather cooperates, but we hope to see everyone there. And the, the last thing I wanted to mention in terms of, really this goes along with, as I was saying, some of the challenges we've seen. You know, as this project, as the construction phase has wrapped up and it has become a public space. You know, we really want to make sure that this transitions, you know, to something that the community really, it not only is able to enjoy, but also sees it as, as their own and something that they want to continue to contribute their time and, and help us make this space very inviting. So that means things like helping us with litter, helping us maintain, you know, just positive recreation in this public space. So we've created a, an ambassador program. And I would like to ask Mary Lynn Loder to just talk a little bit more about this because she has been really leading this all the way. So Mary Lynn, if you can jump in here and talk more before we wrap up.
Okay, thank you Diana and good morning or good afternoon commissioners. I just wanted to let you know, we have the ambassador program. MSD created the, the ambassador program and we're sponsoring it really to help us have additional eyes and ears out in the, the greenway system when we're not there and we can't be there all the time. And the Lick Run project is a unique project and it will, we're looking forward to be successful. We really need a unique approach to how we maintain it and, and care for it. So the, the Lick, the Lick Run Ambassador Program is really a shared commitment between MSD and our community and the partners who really want to take more of a stewardship approach to maintaining the, the asset as it was conceived of being a very, you know, proactive, positive thing within the community. And again, MSD can't do it by ourselves. We need partners, we need ambassadors to, to do what we can't. And that is, you know, really help us, us keep it in good shape for guests and whatnot. So, so the, through the ambassador program, we've been working with different partners. Right now we have Keep Cincinnati Beautiful, Groundwork Ohio River Valley, the Mill Creek Alliance, the South Fairmont Community Council and the Cincinnati Recreation Commission, who have all been part of kind of this discussion of our ambassador program. And so the, the ambassador program has four different elements. The first being attendance. So for example, the Groundwork Cincinnati or Groundwork Ohio River Valley has committed to providing their at-risk summer youth program to be out there and not only be, you know, looking for trash and picking that up, but hopefully actually having more interactions with the users of the greenway. Helping people interpret what the natural systems are that they're seeing, that they're using, that they're enjoying out there. And then also the, the benefit of Groundwork Ohio River Valley is that they have expertise in ecological restoration and maintenance because they're actually part of our MSD's green infrastructure training program that we've had them and some of their, their members participate in. So it's going to be great to have somebody like Groundwork Ohio River Valley with at-risk youth that are summer employees of theirs and being able to provide assistance to us during the hours of like five o'clock at night till nine o'clock at night on weekdays, as well as weekends from eleven in the morning till nine at night. So it's some additional time when MSD doesn't necessarily have our staff out there. But again, it's the ability to have additional eyes and ears and, and help really kick off the greenway in a good, positive way by having more positive interactions and opportunities for people to enjoy the greenway system and, and recognize it as for what it is, which is an innovative stormwater management, green infrastructure system that's helping us reduce combined sewer overflows. We also have activities, different activities that might be happening within the greenway system. And so for example, the Mill Creek Alliance, they're doing some, some water quality monitoring or assessments within the, the waterway system, as well as committing to a, a number of different activities, either arts activities or arts activities or educational activities within the greenway system. Again, to kind of bring people to, to the area and enjoy it and, and see it for what it is and utilize it in a positive way. And then we're also excited about Keep Cincinnati Beautiful and what they bring with their Adopt a Spot program of administering that and also providing resources to us in terms of, you know, additional cleaning materials for volunteers. And that's a big thing is actually recruiting volunteers to actually show up and help with regards to volunteer cleanups. And the last thing I want to mention on that is actually MSD is going to be kicking off really the, the ambassador program and the greenway in advance of the, the grand opening with a MSD employee, volunteer employee cleanup that we're, we've scheduled for Saturday, May fifteenth, which is also part of the Great American Cleanup sponsored through Keep Cincinnati Beautiful. And we're excited to get our employees out there to help, you know, folks who are, are work at MSD that might not have a regular day-to-day interaction with Lick Run or know what it is. But able to get them out and see it and experience it. And all of us kind of work together, of course socially distanced or in, in safe ways. But again, just to get, get, get out the greenway and, and kick off the ambassador program. And so with that, I think that's all we have. Got any?
That's all?
Thank you Mary Lynn.
Oh no, I'm sorry, we have one more thing.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this is essentially what it says, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So there might be people, you know, there might be people out there enjoying the greenway, not sure how to report an issue. So there's two ways to report an issue. Of course, we have our twenty-four seven line, which is three-five-two-four-nine-hundred for any, you know, issues that people have with regards to sewers or, or, you know, anything along with the greenway can be referred to that number. But also Cincinnati, Cincinnati Public Services maintains the Fix It Cincy app. And that's something you can download on your phone for any kind of complaint within the city for city agencies. And then those get routed to the right agency. So that's another tool that people can use, particularly since the, the greenway system is, you know, again, more of a public access kind of place as opposed to, you know, wastewater services. So just want to get that out there as well. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot about that one.
Thank you. I'll open it up for our commissioners if they have any comments or questions as it relates to the report. Vice President Reese.
No, I just want to say it's definitely comprehensive. I do have one question on the change order. Cause I know on whenever we're doing development projects, one of the big things in construction is change orders. You said there will be more to come. You said the original change orders took us to the original amount that you thought it would be. And we have more change orders to come. So will we be over budgeted or is that already budgeted in or how does that work?
Commissioner, yes. So to date, we've had our change orders total thirteen million, which is, is high. And that's, you know, it, it's all relative. But on this project, based on our original estimate, that was, based on the, the contract awarded to Kukocing, that's over ten percent of their change orders. As, as I was explaining, that brings us to one oh, one hundred and two point nine million, which is under what we had requested that the commissioners legislate for this project. At this point in time, we already know of certain change orders that are going to come. They're just not, you know, not approved. We don't have all of the, the figures yet from Kukocing. So there will be additional change orders. I mean, there's also a few outstanding claims pending. Those are currently in mediation. So that's something that we can discuss depending on where that goes. If that mediation is something that we're able to resolve. So those would potentially be a little higher dollar amount than our typical change order, which is why I think it's possible we would be over that original budget in terms of the legislated amount.
Okay, yeah, I just want to walk back for a second. So currently the change orders thirteen million, that brings us to how much was approved. So we have no problem with that part. But you anticipate additional change orders. And what, what would you attribute to the high amount of change orders? Was it something in the original RFP or was it on our end? Or what constituted, as you said, pretty high change? I'm not, I understand the thirteen million we're within. I'm just saying, is something coming back to us, asking us for something else or no?
Not at this time, so not really. In terms of whether there will be more, that's really something that will be, you know, once we are complete through the mediation process, which the lawyers are handling, we would come back to the commissioner if we do, with the commission, if we do need additional appropriation of funds. But I don't have that today. I think generally speaking, you know, change orders are, we always have change orders on construction projects, large and small. There's just, you know, it's, and, and the nature of the process and, and, you know, in the public bidding. So we have contractors that come in and, you know, we give them the design, we give them, you know, what we, you know, the, the project they're going to construct. But there are always things that, you know, are, are changed during the construction process. And, you know, this one, I think it's interesting that, you know, we had such a low bid. You know, again, was it, were those things that, that were anticipated? Or, you know, we had a lot of utility conflicts. I think this was something we talked about last year and, and you were not there Commissioner Reese. But we had a lot of utility conflicts that were not anticipated. We do our best to, you know, to, to understand all of that prior to the actual construction process. But, you know, there's always surprises when you get into a project where you're underground and, and somewhere like this where we've had years and years and decades of, of development. You know, there's just a lot of unknowns as to what you encounter underground. So we had a lot of delays from that and, and just costs that were not anticipated.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate it. I, I'm very familiar with change. That's the biggest thing you watch whenever you're, whether you're doing a private construction of, of someone on their home or their business building or me being in government. The first thing I ask about, what about the change orders? And put a cap on whenever we're doing these type of contracts. You always want to try to put a cap on change orders, knowing that changers will be there, but having a cap. And I just was wondering, when you said it was higher than usual, what was the cause of that? And you answered that question, it's because the underground utility component of it. So anyway, that's what I wanted to know. And then wanted to understand when you say anticipate there'll be more coming. I didn't, I wasn't here last year to vote on it, but I guess the more coming, I will be here. And I just wanted to kind of get an understanding or an anticipation of what you meant by more coming. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Reese brought up what I was also interested in, the change orders. And the conversation, it sounds like deja vu from, from last year. But I actually would be interested in the thirteen million change order. I would like to see what that looks like. It was a million for this, two million for, I, I mean, I, you know, not that I don't have anything else to do, but I really would be very interested in seeing that also. Okay, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you Diana and Mary Lynn for being here today. So Lick Run, so I drive by this every week going to visit my mom. And it looks great and there are people using it and for recreational purposes. And so I think it has achieved what, you know, the hope was, it kind of a transformational project for a neighborhood in distress. And also a, a cheaper alternative to, to huge tunnels, right? Running underground for both stormwater and sewage. So I, I especially applaud the cost savings because that's fantastic and it's significant. But also it, it is a, a nice looking project. And it, it retained a lot of what the community was most concerned about, which were the recreation aspects. And, and they, they're bigger and better than they were. So I think that's good news. A couple of kind of A couple of kind of tertiary items. One is related to the creek bed itself. So it, is it expected that, that basin or the creek bed will be running dry at certain times of year and then wet other times of year? And can you help us better understand the dynamics of that?
Mary Lynn, you want to, as our chief operating officer, I think she's leading operational side of this project.
Yeah, sure. So again, we got to remember, we are in southwest Ohio and natural streams in southwest Ohio naturally go dry. So that's how this was designed so that, you know, it's not going to have flow in it all the time. However, in order to supplement the flow, we do have a, a recirculating pump system. And then the reason why that was installed was because it's, you know, they call it a boot and suspenders kind of an approach. Okay, so it's designed to, to, to sometimes go dry. But as you all know, if we happen to have, you know, an issue with mosquitoes or, you know, some issues like that, we can send flow through it to kind of, you know, freshen it up and whatnot. And so we'll be utilizing the, the recirculating pump system on a, you know, kind of a seasonal basis and, and trying to create more of a mimic of a natural stream.
Okay, so it will be dry some of the year?
Yes, that, that is, the, the intent is to be able to operate it like a natural stream, but we have the, we have the recirculating system so that we can keep it fresh if we have an issue with issues like that.
Yeah, but, and, and so I think it's a little confusing to the public to see a dry, you know, bed, dry pond and then, but, but knowing that during storm events, you're pulling water out of the system. And so remind me, it was at 500 million gallons a year being pulled out of the combined system?
We are, we are estimating, we originally estimated that the CSO reduction is about 600 million gallons from the, from the Lick Run system.
Okay, so I just, because, because I think it's confusing, right? I mean, it's dry. So it's like, wait a minute.
Well, yeah, because again, the combined sewer overflow issue is a wet weather issue.
Right.
You know, so, so typically we're not going to have a stream flow, wet foot, wet weather during dry weather.
Okay.
Just like if you go up into Glen Way Woods or something, the natural streams are not, you know, running during dry weather. So we really tried to make it more of a nat, mimic a natural system. We, we did try to capture some like springs and stuff, so we might see some flow. But again, we're going to be taking, you know, good care of that stuff to be looking at how is it operating and what kind of tweaks we can make.
Okay. Yeah, just early criticisms about, you know, the dryness of the, I'm like, wow, there's clearly a reason for.
Right.
So the last thing I have, I too am concerned about maintenance of this land. I have driven by the wrought iron railing that, that was smashed and really concerned about that related to traffic coming, but also just the maintenance of it and the maintenance of the area to begin with. So because this is such a unique project for MSD and I assume we're not really used to taking care of park-like settings like this, I do wonder if there's a partnership to be had with Cincinnati Parks. And I, and I noted on the partnership list, there were many organizations, but Parks was not listed. And given the fact that Rapid Run Park is literally a stone's throw away from this, I do wonder if there's some potential for partnership so that we've got, and I appreciate the effort to get volunteers out to do cleanup days and that kind of thing, but this property's going to require serious maintenance and the 24/7 kind of maintenance. And so I, I just throw that out there. I, I'm, I sat on the Recreation Commission for 16 years, so I know that they have some capacity, but not that kind of capacity. And so I wonder if the more realistic partner, because it's so much green space, is the Park Department.
And we do have relationships with Cincinnati Parks and we are working with them on, on Rapid Run Park, on some of the existing parks that we have infrastructure on. But we do have green infrastructure specialists on staff. We have people who are on staff that, that is their role is to maintain the green infrastructure that we've been bringing on, on staff. But we will look into that more and, and, you know, like I said, we have had some discussions and have some partnerships with Cincinnati Parks. It wasn't necessarily that we were trying to keep them off that list. I mean, they are a partner. They really, again, on more of those other parks that we have like Rapid Run and the Bio Swale that we have there and the, you know, again, the, the pond that they have on, on Rapid Run Park actually does, that flow does come into the Bio Swale that we constructed and then, and we coordinate with them on that issue because just when they discharge that, that ponds and can sometimes have impacts on, on the Bio Swale and stuff. So we are talking with them a lot on some of those issues. But we have, we have been coordinating with many of the different agencies that do, do different kinds of things, like for example, of all the lighting that we have in the Greenway system, we don't, it, it really doesn't make sense for us to do all of that, you know, replacing the bulbs and all the, the maintenance that has to be done on all of that lighting. So we, we do have an agreement that we're in, in the process of developing with transportation because they manage all of the electrical folks that do that kind of work in the city. So, but then again, Parks does also. So it's, it's kind of like looking at both of those different, where all of the different agencies that we can be partners with and, and we'll, we'll investigate that further.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I'm just most concerned about the diligence, I guess, and, and less concerned about who actually does it.
Yeah.
But maybe the Parks was a natural partner there, but just, you know, just, it's, it's a large area. It's in a still, still challenged area of the city. And so I think it'll be especially important in that area not to have it deteriorate because of litter or, you know, railing being bent in for too long. I mean, it's kind of, that broken windows area is kind of what I'm getting, so.
Exactly.
Wanted to, yeah, bring that to your attention. And I, and I know you guys work on it and I think that the partnerships with some of the volunteer organizations is a great idea because they will then have ownership of, you know, the, the project. So I think that's great.
Yeah, and we need it, we need all of that. You know, we, we can't, we got to do, you know, we need the partners everywhere. And then I'll just mention if I can on the railing. So the contractor, it would take several months in order for the contractor that we currently have Kukocing be able to do that because of the company they use, I think it's up in Chicago or something. So we actually identified a local company that can actually do those repairs for us and we, the city already has a contract with that company. So hopefully within the next, well, I don't want to say a date of when it's going to be fixed, but we're on a, we're on a good target to be able to get that repaired and get that fixed. And then again, the trees, as Diana said, we hope to be able to at least get the, some first segments of them planted because there is really strong research about the benefit and the effectiveness of street trees calming traffic and slowing it down. And also these curb, quick curbs that they're going to put up that are going to physically provide barriers so that people have to stay in their lane and they can't move over and stuff in certain areas. So that's really going to supposed to help too and that, that's transportation is implementing those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. And it's a beautiful area. I'm glad that the residents are able to take part in that area and whoever comes around that area can do that also. So thank you both and we will be inviting you guys back for another presentation very soon. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I heard someone said, what'd you say? Dreehouse, Commissioner Dreehouse?
I said, thank you.
Okay. They say women talk a lot. So anyway, we're moving right along to our next item on the agenda, American Rescue Plan Stakeholder Process Update and Board Discussion. Jeff Aluto.
Thank you, Madam President. And Bridgette is starting the slideshow here. We'll go through this fairly quickly. Really just wanted to provide the board with an update on our stakeholder input process and as well as to continue to get feedback and policy guidance from the board. As I've told the commissioners individually, I want to make sure that as we go through this stakeholder process, that we continue to provide the feedback on a real-time basis to the board as well as continue to get input from the board on a frequent and real-time basis as well, just so that we are not duplicating efforts as it relates to working through some of these potential policy issues. So with that, some of this is going to be remedial, but just a little bit of background on the American Rescue Plan. It is a $1.9 trillion stimulus program of which 350 billion was targeted for the state, local, tribal and territorial program. There, the funds are to be provided in two tranches. The first tranche, 60 days following enactment, we're expecting that to be on May 10th. And the second, no earlier than 12 months after the first payment. We also understand that treasury guidance will also hit on May 10th. So right at the time that we're getting the money, we'll also have the guidance on specifically details how we can use the dollars. Bridgette? In terms of eligible uses, and this is, again, this is remedial for the, for the board, but for folks who may be watching from home, to respond to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to either government workers or those in other sectors performing essential work. To provide government, provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to COVID-19 relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. That is the revenue replacement clause that NICO and the municipal league and others had advocated strongly for and to make necessary improvements in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. Funds cannot be used to directly or indirectly offset a tax reduction or to delay a tax or a tax increase and also can't be deposited directly into a governmental pension fund. And we talked about the guidance coming on the 10th. Bridgette? In terms of potential program categories, and we had thrown this out to the board last time, just to talk about things that we were initially thinking of that we had heard, job creation in particular in the area of youth and women, affordable housing, budget stabilization, economic development and community revitalization. We've heard a lot about broadband, community resiliency and preparedness, enhancing internal operations and workforce development. A lot falls underneath enhancing internal operations, including some things that have been priorities of the board in the past, in particular, reentry program, et cetera. But we will get to that as we talk about some of the feedback from our internal stakeholders. Bridgette, go ahead. Some of our funding principles was to really balance the, the spending of these dollars between addressing urgent health and economic issues as well as trying to make the spend as long-term and transformational as possible. We want to try to avoid long-term unfunded liabilities. We want to stabilize county funds hard hit by COVID-19, minimize duplication of services. We want to try as much as possible to be data-driven in our allocation decisions, obviously get input from stakeholders, collaborate with other local governments. We know the city of Cincinnati and most of the other local governments in Hamilton County will be receiving rescue plan dollars as well as will the state of Ohio, looking for a long-term stability and resiliency and aligning with county priorities. Bridgette? So the process, as the board is aware, was to number one, seek board policy direction. And then we had a, a staff meeting a couple of weeks ago on this where we received some initial feedback, then to hold internal and external stakeholder meetings, assess potential funding options and then provide a recommendation to the board and engage in a, a series of public hearings as well. Bridgette? So we have started the stakeholder process. I'm not going to read through the slide in its entirety, but we started the stakeholder process. We want, we wanted to engage these different stakeholder groups to identify areas that they are seeing within their core business that could potentially be a target for transformational use of American Rescue Plan funding. Bridgette? We've challenged our stakeholders with several questions, including identifying the top issues facing the, the organization, how those issues are currently being addressed. Is there a better, more permanent way to address them and how can federal dollars be used to address a solution? Go ahead, that's fine, Bridgette. Internal stakeholder input to date has been drawn from the follow, from the listed organizations. So pretty much every organization in the county is in some way, shape or form being reached out to. If they're not on this list, they either will be or they have been and we just haven't heard back from them yet. So, but you can see that through the first two meetings, we received input from a large number of internal county organizations and we'll walk through some of that feedback now. Go ahead, Bridgette. And some of these things are, are policy areas that are not unfamiliar at all to the board. So you're going to be seeing some things that, that translate very directly into current and past board policy areas. Mental health, the lack of beds for mental, addressing mental health concerns, identifying additional access points outside of the Justice Center and improving early intervention efforts. There was a lot of talk about workforce development and making sure that as we continue to see reshoring and companies pulling jobs back in to the United States, that the county is prepared to accept those jobs and to have places available for businesses to relocate and to build and also ensuring that we have training programs in place to assist with that. We heard a lot, a lot about facilities and some of the deferred maintenance challenges that the county has faced in the past. Everything from maintenance on existing buildings to the need for additional facilities such as joint EMA and 911 facilities and additional space needs of other departments, including additional security upgrade needs. Go ahead, Bridgette. We heard a lot from internal stakeholders about technology needs in county buildings as well as the upgrade needs for various holistic and legacy systems like the court, the court case management system, the jail management system, our voter registration system, finance system, et cetera, the need to move more systems and documents online. We heard from the judiciary and some of the ancillary support operations like the public defender about making sure the county was prepared for the potential surge in court cases that could come when we find, when the community finally does fully open up. And we heard a lot about housing, about preserving the existing affordable housing stock, investing in longer-term housing, not only for just traditional affordable housing, but also for returning citizens. And we heard a lot about reentry as well as providing foreclosure assistance. Bridgette? We heard from county departments about revenue replacement for impacted funds, including restricted funds, which may have taken hits during the COVID pandemic. We heard a lot about programming for youth, including finding ways to enhance mentoring programs and youth employment programs. Again, we heard, we talked a little bit about infrastructure, but we did hear a lot about, which echoes board priorities about broadband and wireless in the community. We also heard about concerns of county staff and making hazard pay available to essential ineligible employees as well as, and I think there was a broad recognition that these are one-time resources, but nonetheless, there was continued conversation about the status of the county holistically from a market-based compensation perspective. And just a reminder that we need to continue to make progress there. Bridgette? I think we want to talk about a little bit on the timeline now. As the board is aware, we conducted internal stakeholder sessions last week. We move into our external sessions next week. So we will start right after that to start to coalesce all these ideas and to try to put them into some sort of a framework to get it back to the board in May so that we can continue the public input process. I know the board wants to get into public hearings before the end of May so we can get those public hearings wrapped up before people go into, before the board goes into summer session and before people start into vacations, things of that nature and, and kids are off school, that type of thing. So public hearings in late May with revised recommendations based upon those hearings coming back to the board in early June. So I attempted to move through that fairly quickly. Number one, because the board had seen much of it before. Number one, because the board had seen much of it before. But number two, wanted to provide as much chance for any board feedback and policy input as we can for the session so that we're as efficient with the board's time as we can be. So, Madam President, that's all I have in terms of a formal presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Great overview. It sounds like the stakeholders really have some great ideas. I'd like to defer to my colleagues and ask if I know each office has ideas as it relates to the American Rescue Plan and what you'd like to see in it. If we could defer our comments to next Tuesday, with, if there's any objection, if you can let me know now, so we could move forward to our other agenda item. Vice President Reese?
No, I cannot defer to next week.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
It's fine with me.
Okay.
And, Madam President, and as we are working with you and your office, the plan is, as you're aware, to keep this on as a weekly item as we move through the stakeholder process. So that works perfectly with deferring till next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we're going to move to our next agenda item, which is an executive session. I often know, before we go into executive session, just make sure that there's nothing pressing that either of our commissioners wanted to say before we move into our executive session. Vice President Reese?
We can move into the executive session.
Okay. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, I'm fine with moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion to move into our executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to consider property acquisition.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?